Good evening. The September 8th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Isles?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Safford?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I, all here.
Mayor Bis?
Here. We have all members present in person and therefore we have not only a quorum but also the no need for approval of virtual council member participation. The first item on my agenda is the public announcements and proclamations of which there are three. I'm told that there will be folks here to receive the Lakeside Auto Builders' 50th Anniversary Proclamation. Is that the case?
Terrific.
So let me begin with that one. Whereas Lakeside Auto Rebuilders, located at 3101 Central Street, just down the block in Evanston, is celebrating its 50th anniversary. And whereas Lakeside Auto Rebuilders, founded by a seasoned metal fabricator with a background in commercial furniture design and auto collision repair, was established in 1975 by Sarkis Tokat. And whereas Lakeside Auto Rebuilders, a family-owned business, is now run by Armin Tokat, the son of Sarkis Tokat, and a team of dedicated specialists. And whereas Lakeside Auto Rebuilders provides complete auto collision repair for all makes and models. And whereas Lakeside Auto Rebuilders are equipped for hybrid and electric vehicles as well. And whereas Lakeside Auto Rebuilders have continued to uphold community standards by keeping a clean, safe, and honest service for the past 50 years. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 20th, 2025, as Lakeside Auto Rebuilders' Day in honor of their 50th anniversary and encourage all to join the celebration from noon to 3:00 PM on their parking lot for food, drinks, and kids' activities. Would you all please join me in congratulating Lakeside Auto Rebuilders? The next item of the agenda is, the next proclamation is for National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. It's my understanding there is not someone here to accept it, but I'll read this important message. And I wanted to also thank Councilmember Hatakakis for advocacy on this topic. Whereas suicide is a serious public health issue impacting individuals, families, and communities across the nation. And whereas suicide is a preventable tragedy, and proactive education and mental health support can make a significant difference in saving lives. And whereas the stigma surrounding mental health can prevent individuals from seeking help, and open conversations are critical to breaking the silence. And whereas the National Suicide Prevention and Action Month is a time for all citizens to come together to promote awareness, provide support, and cultivate a culture of hope and resilience. And whereas resources like the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline offer immediate support for those in distress, and raising awareness of these services is an ongoing priority. And whereas the theme "We Are Stronger Together, Connect to Protect" reminds us that a strong community network where we check in on one another is a vital tool for suicide prevention. And whereas every conversation, every act of compassion, and every effort to connect with someone who is struggling can be a turning point toward healing. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the city of Evanston, and ask all citizens to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of the family, friends, and neighbors, and learn suicide risks and warning signs, and encourage those who struggle to seek help and genuinely convey appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. The final proclamation, which my understanding is there's also not someone here to receive this one this evening, is Evanston's Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas the observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1998 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas the city of Evanston proudly acknowledges and celebrates the profound and enduring impact of the diverse Latino community and its vibrant heritage across our nation at both the national and local level. And whereas Latinos have made valuable contributions to our society as doctors, entrepreneurs, social workers, first responders, politicians, and writers. Additionally, they have played an important role in advancing technology in the field of law. And whereas as a governing body, it is important for us to carefully consider the positive impact of Latinos on Evanston's culture and success. We must wholeheartedly renew our commitment to providing opportunities that will ensure the accessibility of the American dream for current and future generations to come. And whereas Evanston's commitment to creating the most livable city in America is exemplified by the presence of individuals of Latino descent comprising 11% of Evanston's population, this rich diversity is underscored by Evanston's first Latina city clerk re-elected in April 2025. And whereas it is important to honor and celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Latin Americans and immigrants whose ancestors came from Mexico, Central and South America, and the Caribbean, and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped Latinos as a people. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2025 through October 15th, 2025, as Evanston Hispanic Heritage Month, as the official designated month for the city of Evanston's annual Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon the people of Evanston to join together in recognizing and participating in this special observance. That's the last proclamation, I think, ending on that note. It's just appropriate for me to add that I just want to share extraordinary appreciation to the city, our whole team, from police to outreach to communications, care team, and our various partners at the school districts and a variety of nonprofit organizations. We received word last night of a credible threat that it was probable that ICE would be here today or in the coming days. And I've just been moved and appreciative of everyone coming together in an effort to do all that we can to keep people safe. It's a really tough call. I just want to be very, very kind of clear about this. It's a tough call for us when we hear things like this to determine what is the right level of communication to ensure that we're giving everyone in the community the information that we have to empower individuals to take what steps they deem appropriate to keep themselves safe and also not cause undue panic. And so I just want to thank everyone who's coming together in an effort to share accurate information, not share inaccurate information, because the spread of misinformation is actually extraordinarily dangerous in a situation like this. And just the ethic of mutual support that I've seen in this community. We're all going to do everything we can to keep everyone safe, even in a, even in a time like this. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, councilmembers. Clerk Mendoza, I have three items tonight. The first one is a bittersweet item, so I would ask Rajeev to hold up, please come forward to the podium. I'm going to share a few words about him. He has decided after 27 years of service to the city to retire. After beginning his civil engineering career with the New York Department of Transportation, Rajeev began working for the city of Evanston in 1998 as a senior traffic engineer. Since then, he has worked on all of Evanston's most difficult traffic challenges, developing procedures and guidelines for neighborhood traffic calming, working with residents on stop signs, speed humps, speed radar signs, and crosswalks. He installed the first bike lanes in Evanston, has continued to work on bike lane installation throughout the city. He has developed a number of the plans currently being implemented, including the 2009 multimodal plan, the Safe Routes to Schools Plan, and the Streetlight Master Plan. He has led the charge in upgrading over 75 of the city's 104 traffic signals, bringing in millions in federal funding to modernize outdated signals. Most recently, he completed the Oakton Corridor Improvement Project and the sidewalk installations on Green Leaf and Hard Tree, transforming neighborhood safety in those areas. It is difficult to quantify one person's work to calculate the number of accidents that didn't happen and the number of schoolchildren that made it to school without an incident, but Rajeev's work has undoubtedly improved safety and quality of life for the people of Evanston for the last 27 years. Rajeev's last day will be on September 26th. Rajeev, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Rajeev, would you like to share a word?
Well, well, thank you for the kind words, city manager. It's been great working for the city. I couldn't think working for any other municipality. I did have opportunities, but decided to stay here. It's always been the city, and the citizens have always been forward-thinking, very cooperative, very nice. And we always, you know, the city council and the citizens always give us the support to go ahead and implement things that other municipalities were not doing. And we always appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Harris?
So Rajeev, I just want to say thank you. When we first met, we had some concerns from residents, and we had to back each other up, and you did that very well. And I most definitely appreciate the Greenwood, Hard Tree, and what's the High Street? Now I can't think. Green Leaf, Green Leaf, yes. So Green Leaf and Hard Tree Project, that was a pleasure working with you, and also the bicycle improvement. So I'm sad, we were just on a call the other day, I didn't know you were leaving, so I appreciate your work. So thank you very much, and please get your rest now.
Thanks again, Rajeev. Next up is Chris Seuss, Assistant City Engineer, who's going to provide an update on the 2025 Bike Plan.
We're going to call an audible, and instead we're going to go with the fiscal 2025 mid-year financial plan update led by Hitesh and Clayton Black.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to give a mid-year update on our financials. Let me open the screen. So this is for the benefit of those members of council not on the Finance and Budget Committee. We did do this presentation in the middle of August with that committee, but again, it's just kind of a repeat for those of you that were part of that conversation. So we'll start with a quick look at the general fund. So we do this mid-year presentation based on June financials each year. It's a good halfway point to review. One would expect that revenues and expenses both in a completely normal situation would be trending around 50%. Year-to-date through June, in terms of revenues in the general fund, they were at 54% of budget. 6.2 million of that was unbudgeted permit revenue from the Northwestern Educational Buildings that went under construction this year. A year-to-date expenses through June of 73 million, for a year-to-date net of about $3 million. As you can see, were it not for that one-time permit revenue, we would be sitting at a net deficit of about $3 million at the midpoint against the budgeted deficit of 11 million. But fortunately, those projects went under construction, and we're sitting in a net surplus situation instead of a net deficit because of those projects. And again, just to reiterate that point further, our fund balance is sitting at a healthy $52 million as of the end of June. Were it not for the one-time permit revenue from the projects this year, as well as the stadium last year, our general fund fund balance would be sitting at 35 million or 23%. So one can't really emphasize enough how much those one-time revenues have really distorted our true financial picture and allowed us to defer some necessary potential increases to revenues or potential difficult reductions to expenses. So again, sitting in a healthy position at the mid-year point thanks to those projects. Taking a look at general fund revenues, five revenues comprise about 50% of total general fund revenues. These are the sales taxes, the income tax, the use tax, and the property taxes. So just these five revenues alone, if you get an idea of how they're tracking, you've got a good handle on about half of the general fund revenues. Property tax, this language was taken from a Crane's article a few weeks ago at this point. They said that our second installment property taxes were typically set out by July 1st, delayed until at least September 1st, that didn't happen with October 1st, more likely according to Cook County. We're really hoping that those property tax bills do go out with a deadline here by the end of the year in the next couple of weeks, but they're significantly delayed, and it's a significant amount of revenue that we are waiting to receive. Sales taxes, home rule sales taxes and use taxes continuing to do well and up 1.8% when you combine all three of them. There's been a restructuring in how taxes are collected for online transactions this year, and we've seen a massive drop in use taxes and a counter-increase in sales taxes. So Amazon point-ofdestination taxes are now being taxed based on the tax rate in the community where an item is purchased and delivered for out-of-state purchases. And so they've netted out enough so that we're seeing an increase of about 1.8% in sales taxes year-to-date. Income taxes, so many folks think that because our residents may have higher incomes than the rest of the state, we track better here, but income taxes are distributed on a per-capita basis and at the discretion of the General Assembly. And so we have seen those trend a little high this year, up 7.5% compared to last year's actuals. And then SP1 tonight is focused on the state grocery tax, which is scheduled to be eliminated by the end of the year, but we'll save that discussion for a little later on. A couple other revenues that are really, that really fluctuate with the economy, some of our more vulnerable revenues. One is the real estate transfer tax. You can see this one's up 63% compared to 2024 actuals through July, so we have seen a good recovery here. The first $1 million has been deposited in the reparations tax, in the reparations fund as budgeted. This tax peaked at $6 million in 2021, right around $3 million the last couple of years, but we're performing well this year and likely to finish close to $4 million in 2025. Another one that's fluctuated a lot in recent years is the personal property replacement tax, or PPRT. These are down 31% compared to 2024 actuals. IML is projecting a continued decrease in this revenue in 2026, a slight decrease from our current levels. You can see this green bar represents 2025, and these are the previous three years. So this is a revenue that was a tremendous source of revenue for the general fund several years ago. It's continued to shrink and is now closer to pre-pandemic levels. Building permits doing exceptionally well, others like amusement taxes, streaming taxes, ticket fines doing extremely well. Several stable and consistent revenues like liquor taxes, parking taxes, motor fuel taxes, natural gas utility, wheel taxes, and transfers, very easy to predict from a year-to-year basis, and our budget is always generally right on target with those revenues. Easy to predict and very consistent year-over-year. Others not doing well, these include GEMT service revenue. This is likely to continue given cuts to Medicaid. It's a revenue source that's trickled down in the last couple of years. Electricity use tax, while rates have gone up pretty significantly this summer for electricity, usage has gone down ever so slightly, so we've seen slight reductions to our electricity use tax, and then telecom tax trending a little low as well. So through these slides, we've mentioned 84% of general fund revenues, so you should have a pretty good handle on how revenues are tracking at this point. This table, a little small to see unless you've got your packet or a computer in front of you, summarizes our low and high projections for all of our revenues. Where you see double green, we're likely to finish over budget. Where you see double red, we're likely to finish under budget. And the uncolored revenues are those that are stable, predictable, and consistent from year-to-year. This shows that we're likely to finish somewhere between $5 million and $10 million over budget on revenues. Keep in mind that $6 million of revenues is from those Northwestern permit projects, so outside of that project, our budget looks to be within about 2% to 3% from a revenue standpoint, which is pretty close on a $140 million revenue budget. So with that in mind, this shows how we expect to finish 2025 in the general fund. We had a budgeted deficit of about $11 million. We expect to finish with a deficit, but hopefully a smaller one than budgeted, looking at somewhere between a $7 million deficit and a $1.8 million deficit, and a fund balance between $42 million and $47 million. That being said, as I mentioned, we've been very fortunate the last couple of years to see a lot of revenues, one-time revenues from these permit projects. Were it not for those, I think our financial situation would look a lot different today. After removing those one-time revenues, the city's general fund is in a structural deficit situation. We've made some major decisions over the last few years without necessarily touching our revenue side of the ledger. These include the most recent collective bargaining agreements and a significant increase in required public safety pension funding. These two items alone constitute nearly $30 million in increases to expenses without a dedicated increase in revenues to offset that. Property taxes are still frozen at 2020 levels despite inflation of nearly 25% since 2020. 2026 represents the final year that the city can spend its ARPA funds, so that's a big item going into our 2026 budget, is making sure that we expend those funds. We're looking at some new general fund expenses for 2026. These include the rent at this building, vehicle purchases, which were previously covered by ARPA investment income, as well as tri-annual tree inoculation, which costs about $750,000 every three years. Given feedback from the Finance and Budget Committee, our 2026 budget does include a Parks and Rec Fund, pulling out Parks and Rec expenses and showing them separately from the general fund, essentially as a sub-fund of the general fund. Each of the city's comparable communities do have a separate park district that generally levies its own property tax to cover nearly 50% of its expenses. The city of Evanston doesn't have this type of levy, which is why our levy and our rate is actually rated lower among our comparable communities. We do expect a decrease in permit revenues. The community development team checked with Northwestern, and there are no major projects planned for 2026, so our ability to continue to rely on those one-time revenues is likely coming to an end at least next year. Pension funding, as I mentioned already, we've seen significant increases in our required contribution as we've moved to full funding of our pensions by 2040, and we've received the actuarial reports for what is required to be contributed in 2026, and it represents about a $700,000 increase from 2025. And then finally, zero-based budgeting, that work is underway and expected to be a component of our proposed 2026 budget as well. So we've talked about the general fund, spent most of this presentation on that, but want to highlight just a couple of other funds. One is our Human Services Fund. This fund pays for our mayor's summer youth program, the CARES team, various health department services, as well as the mental health board allocations that the community development department oversees. This fund had a fund balance of about, of $3.5 million at this time in 2023, and it now sits at $1 million. It's primarily supported by just a property tax levy, and it's really a microcosm of the city's general fund, significantly impacted by wage increases and expansion in programming over the last few years. And again, now it's seen its fund balance in just two years go down to just $1 million at the midway point of the year. So that we expect to be a significant challenge as part of this budget is establishing the revenues necessary to pay for the programming that's been planned. Couple other funds to talk about, the CIP Fund. This deficit now sits at about $9 million with a cash deficit of $3 million. The difference between those two is cash the city had on hand that was eventually owed to IDOT for projects that are completed but not yet invoiced for. We haven't issued bonds for 2025 projects, 2024 projects? 2024 or 2025 projects at this point? So we've been drawing down cash reserves in a difficult rate environment in order to make payments on those projects and keep them moving forward. So that's one fund, and then another one is the Water Fund. It's sitting on a large fund cash balance according to our mid-year report, but most of this is cash on hand from last year's bond issuance, as well as a reimbursement earlier this year from WIFIA. As part of year-end, we do a lot of adjustments, and that will be adjusted as part of that. Last slide, so just the remaining funds. This shows our required fund balance and the amount of excess or deficit within each of those funds. A couple that are sitting on large amounts well above the reserve include the MFT, where we pay for large capital projects. In the Sewer Fund, there is a large fund balance here, but there is a large capital project that's been identified in the 2026 CIP that should draw on significant amount of that. In the Water Fund, we make significant adjustments based on loans, so this really isn't a great number to use until the annual audit is completed. And then finally, Fleet and Insurance. So both of these funds are internal service funds with some amount of excess reserves within them, and this is something we can review as part of the budget to see if there's available excess reserves within those funds that are not encumbered that we can use in other places as needed potentially, since these are just transfers from the general fund. So again, we're here in September, we'll be bringing forward a proposed budget in October. We are meeting with members of the city council over the next couple of weeks individually to have some preliminary discussions about the budget, get your feedback and thoughts on some of these challenges that are on this slide. So I look forward to engaging in that process with the council and presenting the budget in October.
Thank you. Any questions for Clayton?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And next up, we're going to bring Chris back up for the Bike Plan Update. Welcome again.
Good evening, members of the city council, Mayor Bis. My name is Chris Seuss. I'm the Assistant City Engineer here at the city of Evanston. I'm here to give you a brief overview of our proposed 2025 Bike Plan Update, kind of stemming on our recent, our last Bike Plan Update was 2014, so it's about that time. To give you a brief recap, the 2014 Bike Plan Update was accepted and placed on file in 2014. The intent of that Bike Plan Update was to identify various priority corridors throughout the city, expand some of our existing policies and programs for safety, parking, and education, as well as guide new lanes, signage, and bike racks, specifically identify capital projects that we can do in the future based on corridor improvements or potential solutions that we can have. 10 years, it's been about 10 years now since the 2014 update, so we need to reprioritize some of our mindset to align with some of our best practices. On this slide is the existing bicycle network. This is a snip from our 2014 Bike Plan Update. You can see some of the corridors here that were proposed as, proposed planned improvements at that time, Sheridan Road, in which was constructed in 2018, a segment of Church Street, Davis Street, and this long segment along Dodge. These were among many projects that were recommended as part of that 2014 Bike Plan Update. On the next slide, you'll go ahead and see all the projects that were completed since 2014. So as you can see, we've done quite a bit of work since 2014. Most of these were identified as part of the 2014 Bike Plan Update or in alignment with some of the goals and recommendations of that Bike Plan Update. As you can see, the Sheridan Road one, the Howard Street, Main Street, and Davis, the few that were on that previous slide. Steph went ahead and put together an existing map as of August 2025, so all of the projects that were completed after 2014 Bike Plan Update, they were incorporated here. So a lot of the infrastructure, the two-way protected bike lanes, some of the shared streets, all of the implementations from the 2014 Bike Plan and moving forward has been implemented in this map. This would be, a final copy of this would be deliverable for such a 2025 Bike Plan As far as some of the upcoming projects, two main projects that are coming up in 2027 and 2028 is the Church Street pedestrian and bicycle improvements. That's a proposed two-way bike lane on the south side of Church Street, spanning from Dodge Avenue to the west city limits, and then the north-south shared-use path spanning from Church Street pretty much to Harvard Park with a proposed underbridge at Dempster Street Bridge. We were able to receive just $4.4 million in grant funding, $3 million of which was from ITEP, and $1.4 million from CMAP. In addition to this project, we have the Chicago Avenue Multimodal Corridor Improvements, Chicago Avenue from Howard Street to Davis. This is a two-way protected bike lane in which right now is in the design phase. We've had a significant amount of community engagement, both with the residents and the business owners along this stretch. business owners along this stretch. One thing I did like to mention is that we also have substantial grant funding for this project, 3 million from ITEP and just over 10 million, which we were recently told that we did receive the grant funds from CMAP. Why do we want to put together the Bike Plan Update now? Just to make sure that our current goals and equity goals, sustainability goals, and basically overall transportation goals, that this Bike Plan will align with all of those in 2014. Maybe there was different set of council goals, or it was part of the 2009 multimodal plan, for example. So as we implemented new goals and strategies, we'd want to make sure that some of the proposed items in this Bike Plan Update would align with that. To address some of the current and safety, current safety and crash data, we were able to obtain accident and safety data from the Illinois Department of Transportation, as well as the Police Department from Evanston, dating back from 2013 to present. So all the bicycle accidents and pedestrian bicycle, vehicle bicycle accidents, we plan on incorporating that into a map in which will identify certain corridors or intersections as high-accident corridors that would also assist us in any sort of update. To reflect the updated design standards and best practices since 2014, a lot of the design standards and best practices, as you move along and kind of reiterate the bike lanes and various bicycle infrastructure, it kind of naturally grows and federal and state standards typically get more stringent and incorporate more. Also, the response to various change in ridership patterns and community expectations. As you guys know, in 2014, we put together a Bike Plan and all of the previous projects shown added to the infrastructure that we have. So now we have to take a second look and kind of see if there's any existing gaps in our infrastructure that we can accommodate through this. And lastly is to evaluate the past approaches. Under the 2014 Bike Plan Update, we had 27 corridors were identified to, for potential improvement, and eight of those were recommended for future evaluation. So we want to go ahead and take a look back at those recommendations and see whether or not they're still feasible today. What will this Bike Plan Update for the council and the residents? As far as the network and data side, we will provide an update of the existing map and bicycle facilities and infrastructure. We again want to analyze the completed versus uncompleted 2014 corridors. That's the 27 corridors that I referred to, some of them which may not be feasible at this moment, or maybe some of them are, but it's something we need to circle back on. Take a look at the crash and safety data, as I mentioned, to identify high-crash areas or sidewalk citations to see where bicyclists are typically riding on the sidewalk. Put together a level of traffic stress and level of service analysis. We were able to obtain two different data sets. I'll go through those in a future slide. And more or less on the evaluation and policy side is kind of update the existing policy and recommendations that we have and put a framework to provide a connected and low-stress network. The next steps, we've already initiated some of it, which is data collection as far as crash data, as I mentioned, from the Illinois Department of Transportation. And then bike counts and ridership trends. Where are the, where is the existing infrastructure improvements needed? We can, we can basically rely on some of the bike counts and ridership trends to help us identify those corridors, review some of our standard policies. And last but not least is the targeted community engagement. We intend on doing targeted community engagement, given that this is going to be handled by in-house staff. We want to focus on ward meetings, surveys, perhaps one or two public events that would help us reach the targeted community that we're looking for. The vision for this is to, as we mentioned, provide an updated map to show progress since 2014, propose new corridor improvements. As we did in 2014, we identified a certain list of them. Now is our job to come up with new ones and maybe address some of the reasons why we couldn't fulfill some of those other proposals. In addition to that, we're going to do a secondary low-stress network, a secondary map in which would complement the existing proposed, the existing Bike Plan and kind of update the final maps and crash tables to show how far we've come, what kind of safety measures were taken, and how were those impacted to some of the existing safety. A snapshot to the 2025 Bike Plan. As I mentioned, one of the two data sets that we're going to use is the bicycle level of service. This data was obtained from the Illinois Department of Transportation. It's basically using these variables to identify whether or not the street meets a certain level of service for a potential bicycle rider. So a lot of these variables are the existing geometric conditions of the roadway, or some of the traffic and safety impacts for that roadway. We're able to obtain this from the Illinois Department of Transportation. This is a secondary data set in which we were able to obtain from the Cook County Department of Transportation. So the bicycle level of service is the infrastructure and the feasibility of how well and what level of service that infrastructure can be used. And the level of traffic stress is the perceived comfort and safety of the cyclist if they were to be riding along that stretch. So based on the facility type, operating speed, a few variables that would show a perceived impact to that bicyclist would be another variable that we'd use for our analysis. Lastly, as we move forward, we plan on doing additional community engagement as far as helping us with the bicycle counts. So in October 2025, we plan to do an outreach to residents who are willing to help us with some of the bicycle counts at key intersections. Shifts will be available weekends and weekdays at high-use locations. And we, we did prepare a RSVP form in the coming slides so that you guys could sign up if that's something you'd be interested in.
Thank you. Questions for Chris?
Councilmember Dusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chris. Really appreciate your work on this. My first question is, how long is it going to take until we publish the new plan?
So we do have a preliminary timeline of sometime in May of next year. It does, we have to do a significant amount of analysis, some of the corridor analysis, identify ridership, what the bike counts show us, some of the community engagement back and forth to make sure the corridors that we're proposing for future improvement will align with both the council goals and the residents' goals. So right now, the timeline is roughly to publish in May or June, or bring it to council for adoption or place on file next year.
Great. And do you have, do we have the resources in place to be able to get to that goal in that timeframe?
So we've already done some preliminary data. So I've updated the existing Bike Plan as of right now what our infrastructure is. We do, as long as we keep the engagement at a reasonable level, of course, we still want to engage the residents, but we're going to do a more targeted, targeted engagement with them, whether that be through the ward meetings, maybe perhaps doing joint ward meetings and online surveys. Steph feels that we can do it in-house, and that's something, an effort that we're planning on completing and succeeding to do by the end of June.
No consultants required. We can handle this.
As of right now, no. No, we plan on following the...
Right. And we do have some expertise in the community that we should be able to tap into.
Yeah. We do plan on putting together an advisory and steering committee in which will include some of the members of the community to help, to help guide us in the right direction and make sure that it's a collaborative effort.
Will that be an informal kind of working group committee, or is that something that the mayor is going to have to appoint people to? I would prefer to keep it simple.
So I believe perhaps an email was sent out quite recently from the city engineer. I, I'm not sure. That seems like something we're going to put together a steering and advisory committee, and throughout the process, we'll kind of meet with them on an as-needs basis to make sure that anything's addressed.
And I would just emphasize the importance of one of the deliverables that was on your list, which is the prioritized project list. I think it's great to have a map, and we have a good map, but the map shows, you know, a lot of bike routes that if you look at the street, there really is nothing that identifies it as a bike route, other than maybe a sign. What I would like to see is as much built-in infrastructure as possible. And inevitably, there's a lot more we would like to do than we're going to have funds to do, you know, immediately. So I just want to emphasize prioritizing the project list so that we can plan as part of our capital improvement project plan well in advance, so that we are ready to go when certain streets come up for repaving or resurfacing in a matter of routine, which is going to happen anyway, that we are ready to put bicycle infrastructure in place and have a priority established so that we can go about that in a financially efficient manner. So thank you. Hugely supportive. I brought my, rode my bike here tonight, which is why I brought my bike helmet here. So yeah, thank you. I'm aboard. Thank you.
Councilmembers Rogers, Hedakatis Isles.
So first off, thank you, Councilmember Dusma, for recognizing that that's to recognize bikes and not that you were anticipating some fight tonight that we should have brought helmets for.
It's here if I need it.
Thank you for putting this together. I noticed that we're kind of beginning the community engagement in October. Is there anything that's being done with Bike the Ridge, which is like right before October?
So the reason why I brought this to council in the first September meeting is perhaps incorporate one community event in advance, but October is just for the bicycle counts. Because the bicycle counts were taken in 2013, in October, we wanted to do an apples-to-apples, but we're surely looking into doing community engagement events, and Bike the Ridge seems to be one that's applicable.
All right. Thanks.
Councilmember Hedakatis in the Isles.
Well, Chris, thanks a lot for this presentation. This is really exciting. You know, we were really lucky that we are getting funding from IDOT for the Chicago Avenue Protected Bike Lane. I just want to share kind of, you know, what a big game changer that is potentially for, you know, people who aren't always comfortable riding their bike in the street. I think where we can, I'm always a big proponent of protected bike lanes, you know, with two, you know, now 13 and 11-year-old, you know, as they go around town, it's, you know, I see the built infrastructure when we have protected lanes is so much safer. I do see a big gap in the east-west connectivity, and I know I've talked, and also with Sarah Furito, about, you know, kind of how we connect our community to other communities. And this is like, I think, really exciting work to kind of dig into. And the one thing I think, as we go forward, kind of looking at where we have resurfacing projects and like trying to align our bike infrastructure to projects that we're already going to do is really important, because I think we have to really be, if we had unlimited funds, this would be easy, but I think, you know, minimizing the impact of construction and building like that built-in infrastructure, I think is so important, but really excited to see what plans we have going forward. So thanks.
Councilmember Isles and then Harris.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I also rode my bike, but I left my helmet down on the bike downstairs. I forgot.
You're also a literal boxer, so...
That's true. I don't need the helmet. So when I talk to bikers and when I'm trying to get around town, we do north-south pretty well. The Dodge one's already done. I'm excited about the Chicago one in the future, but I hear a lot of sort of difficulty going east-west. And I, and I saw that you, you've got Church on the horizon. Any thoughts? Can we get a peek behind the curtain about other east-west routes? I know that Main Street was redone, and it was just shared only between Hinman and Ridge. Is there any thought to extending that from Ridge to Green Bay Road? Or is it Green Bay? No, not Green Bay Road. What is it? McCormick, thank you. McCormick, whether that can be done, or like, I sometimes ride my bike down Lincoln is a fairly safe alternative if that's an option, or what, what sort of things are you thinking?
Sure. So we did put together, or we plan on putting together a request for proposal for Lincoln Street Phase 1 from Sheridan going up to Prairie, just past Green Bay. That's one location. And then upon speaking with the folks at Willmet, Isabella is an option that may be feasible, so we can have that, that side, that east-west corridor. As we do more review and kind of sorting through all of them, that's something sure we will take a look at.
Do you ever, when you're seeking opinions and out in the community, do you ever factor in sort of, I remember when my kids were in elementary school, there was, you know, a planned route the kids were supposed to walk to school. Do you ever factor like District 65 routes into how we plan our bike infrastructure?
So as we do this new secondary stress network, that will be one of the options where we're going to identify key destinations such as schools or other facilities in which a secondary, a secondary network will identify that as an easier path to get to those destinations. So that's something we're looking into, and schools is definitely one of those key destinations.
I, I remember hearing a stat when we were talking about the Chicago corridor protected bike lanes, that when you implemented the Dodge ones, you saw a threefold increase in high school traffic, like, so I think there is, if you build it, they will come, sort of mentality there. But thank you. I appreciate your presentation.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that I'm very excited. We had a second and fifth ward meeting just last week to introduce the Church Street improvement and Dodge, and some of what you talked about, 65 and 202 are on there. And I'm really excited about the possibilities and creation of the safety. Tomorrow, we begin at ETHS. We have an open forum for, I put the wrong time in my phone, so I'm always early.
4:30 to 7:30.
Okay, 4:30 to 7:30 at ETHS, and we look forward. And we had it early at 4:30 because somebody will say, well, I can't get there at 4:30. That's for the kids. So when they get out of high school, they have the opportunity to be part of this because it's important. Many of our bikers are our youth. So if you are interested in the bicycle improvement in the second and fifth ward, then I encourage you to come tomorrow to ETHS. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it. And Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I emailed a public comment to everyone. And then just on another note, we're going to be off. We're going to have our city council meeting on the fifth Monday of the month, September 29th, because we're celebrating Roche.
Roche Shana.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bis. And that is all. Thank you.
It's good to be finally useful around here. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This evening, everyone will be given two and a half minutes for their public comment. We begin with those who signed up in person to speak in person, starting with Kelly Mack, who'll be followed by Nancy Floyd, and then Larry Akey.
Good evening, council. Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza. I'll let Sam start.
I'm Sam Mack.
I'm Kelly Mack.
This is Leo Mack. I'm a fourth-generation Evanstonian. No need to say that other than flex, raising a fifth Evanstonian.
We're here to support the work towards updating the city's Bike Plan and overall cycling infrastructure. As six ward residents and owners of Mack's Biking Goods on Central Street for the last five years, we wanted to take a minute to share four key takeaways. As a family who bikes almost every single day in Evanston, here they are. Number one, ridership has increased, and we are seeing more and more people of all ages riding bicycles. Nearly every day at school drop-off at Willard, where our son attends, the bicycle racks are full. Today, I counted 25 bicycles at pickup. This past weekend, at the Folk Festival, bicycles lined the perimeter of the grounds as people opted to ride their bicycles to the beautiful event, and also thank you for creating that space. At Friday night's Northwestern home opener, racks were filled with all types of bikes and scooters, including ours. The community is showing that they're ready to continue riding, and as such, we deserve to create the best infrastructure possible for all of us, as it aligns with so many of our city's transportation, sustainability, and equity goals. Number two, safety continues to be a real concern. Just last week, in our shop, we had two people who were hit by cars in our area, one student at ETHS, where the driver did not stop, and a retired woman who rides daily. I'll let Sam handle the three and four.
Yeah, so we fully support community engagement. We're very happy to be spaced for collaborative efforts, and we want to support the plan in any way possible. And then, you know, as we work towards these plans, we understand that infrastructure allows riders of all age, I'm sorry, a true network of connected bicycle infrastructure allows riders of all ages and abilities to really truly feel safe on the roads. And, you know, the bigger projects are in the planning phase. Could it be possible to at least consider things like Sherro's on our already designated bike routes that have signs that are usually hidden by bushes or... hidden by bushes, or also getting clouded and other municipal signs that are already presented? So, we ride Lincoln every day. Oops, sorry.
That's the paper. So, thank you so much, and we look forward to collaborating.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nancy Floyd. He'll be followed by Larry Akey, and then Tricia Connolly.
My name is Nancy Floyd, and I was born and raised Buddhist. My family lineage goes back to Russia and Mongolia. My Buddhist faith is woven into the fiber of my being. And when I founded the Hartwood Center for Body, Mind, Spirit in Evanston in 1999, I founded it on the Buddhist principles of service to my community. Hartwood provides jobs, free healthcare, subsidized housing, and meditation and Buddhist practices in Evanston and beyond. All of the Hartwood activities are part of our religious 501(c)(3) status, and we are in complete compliance. I have a document from our attorneys I wish to submit for the record, to be distributed to council members, please, that verifies this. When Adam Finlayson released his sixty-page attack on Hartwood as a Buddhist temple, we were shocked and deeply concerned. As Tibetan Buddhists, we are no strangers to religious persecution. But when we read the public text chain on Reddit between Adam and who he says is Mayor Biss, we were beyond shocked. We were heartsick. Here is that text. Mayor Biss, Popeye's Gate is so much dumber than when we last spoke. Who would have thought this possible? Exclamation point. Adam, I found a way to make it dumber. Mayor Biss, tell me more. Adam sends his sixty-page document to the mayor entitled Hartwood Violations. Mayor Biss, holy shit, you don't play around. I have received hate-filled and threatening messages against Hartwood as a Buddhist temple and myself as a Buddhist woman from people identifying as both Chrissy Harris and Mayor Biss supporters. I'm working with the Evanston Police on this, and our attorneys have issued a cease and desist letter to Adam to stop this harassment and lies. A copy of this in the text chain for the record for council members. My request, Mayor Biss, Councilmember Harris, please ask your supporters to stop initiating hate activities against Hartwood and myself and our Buddhist temple. Hartwood is a legal Buddhist temple, no different from your Christian churches, Jewish synagogues, and Muslim mosques. If any of those religious organizations were going to be negatively impacted by an adjacent use that would likely lead to their closure, would it be okay for them to speak up, or would they also be attacked? Evanston is better than this. If this hate is generated towards Hartwood for speaking up against Popeyes simply because we expect the city to follow its own zoning code, then it could happen to any of you. Let's keep this the zoning issue it is and stop the hate, stop the religious persecution. All of Evanston should be appalled that a religious organization is being attacked in this way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Larry Akey, who'll be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Chuck Wasserberg.
Mayor Biss, members of the council, my name is Larry Akey. I'm a resident of Ward Two, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Sojoling Meditation Center, doing business as Hartwood Center for Body, Mind, Spirit. As we've spoken with some of you, it's become apparent that the proposal for Popeyes on the corner of Dempster and Dodge is more than a zoning issue. It's an economic issue. It seems that some of you are expecting a windfall if a fast-food restaurant goes in on that corner. I would just point out that there was a chicken takeout just across the street at Dodge that's now out of business, so I don't know that that windfall is in fact going to occur. If the Popeyes special use is denied as it should be, and we'll litigate this issue fully before the Land Use Commission, Hartwood has already submitted an offer to the owner of that property for the purchase of the property, and we're talking with Four Sons Plant-Based Kitchen about creating a choice food hall in that same location. Some people have expressed concern that if we succeed, we will apply for exemption to take that property off the tax roll, and I want to assure you that that is not the case. Let me be clear. If we are able to purchase the property at Dempster and Dodge, we will not use it for religious purposes, so we will not apply for tax exemption. Again, Hartwood will pay exactly the same property tax that Popeyes would pay. The city will not lose any property tax revenue by denying Popeyes. Choice between a locally, the choice that you're facing is between a locally-owned business and a franchisee from Glenview. By denying Popeyes, the council will help to create wealth in the community and keep it in the community. Our proposal is more in keeping with the intent of the Thrive Initiative and other health and equity plans in the community. We'll also want to point out that there's a concentration of special use at the corner of Dempster and Dodge. There are nineteen special use permits already in that corridor. One of the standards by which Land Use Commission and the council needs to look at adding an additional special use is a cumulative negative impact, and we will litigate that issue fully before Land Use Council or Commission, and plan to come back to you with that same issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Chuck Wasserberg, and then Ken Prosky.
Good evening, Mayor Biss and City Council. We spent $3 million for a consultant for Evanston Thrives and $750,000 for a consultant for Envision Evanston using taxpayer ARPA money. It's not clear to me if we ever recouped any part of that $750,000 since we fired that consultant. Have we done any review of this investment? I found it difficult to see the details about how the Second Ward fared in the Thrive program. The only thing that was clear was the addition of wayfinding with new banners. Regardless of what was shared from the community outreach done by consultants, it has been surprising to me that here we are. Popeyes seems to have sailed through the administrative review with no regard for our community input or our code. The Evanston Thrives document, along with the draft of our Envision Evanston 2045, reiterates prioritizing support for small locally-owned businesses over large chains. Include provisions for equitable economic growth across neighborhoods. Do we have more locally-owned businesses than we did in 2023 at the inception of this Thrives program? Did anyone in the Second Ward receive funding to help them? Who's overseeing where funds go, and is there equitable distribution? In addition, in the Thrives report, feedback from the consultants stated that our economic development is operated reactively, not proactively. This causes me to think about Popeyes, the Popeyes situation, and the problems concerned neighbors have faced with the city not following our municipal code or engagement with neighbors. So, regardless of thriving and envisioning, the bottom line is unless our city leadership is proactively following what is said in our municipal code, the rest is simply very expensive window dressing. We are asking you to say no to Popeyes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Chuck Wasserberg, who'll be followed by Ken Prosky, and then Mary Rosinski.
Hi there. A lot of things I'm about to say were already said, so I won't take up that much of your time. But I am a Second Ward resident, and I live about three blocks from that Dempster Dodge intersection that's been under discussion with Popeyes. It's an overly complicated issue. It's become overly complicated, and I want to just provide some simplification here in case anybody's missed the point. The proposal to have a Popeyes at the corner of Dempster and Dodge, at its core, it seems really straightforward. Do we add another fast-food restaurant, a grease trap, you know, that creates more trash, more traffic, et cetera, or do we support the potential for a locally-owned business that would be paying taxes? The owners of Four Sons who want to move into that property have a proven track record already, and this seems to me something that the city would in fact embrace, given our vision of equity and the Evanston Thrives plan. Same time, the situation became overly complicated and contentious because, at least initially, city procedures weren't followed for public input and so on. Popeyes was already well along in the process before the public was brought into the picture at a Second Ward meeting, which gave the impression that Popeyes was simply being slipped through without community input. Whether or not that was the case, I don't know, but that was the impression. The idea that Hartwood and local residents are now demanding some kind of procedural change, which has come up in a few conversations, is a ludicrous attempt at gaslighting. All we want is for the procedures to be followed in the first place and for Evanston to live up to its vision. Everything else is just noise. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ken Prosky, who'll be followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Chris Heald.
Good evening. I'm Ken Prosky, and I'm here to comment on item P7 on your agenda, the Northwestern softball stadium. I am Northwestern's immediate neighbor on the east side of the U2 district. At the last city council meeting, Northwestern said that night practices would be one-off situations held out of necessity only. They indicated later that they would revise their request to limit the impact of nighttime lighting on residents. Obviously, Northwestern has other plans for use of this stadium beyond the softball team for Northwestern because they're asking in the new request for more lighting and more use of the facility than just the softball team. As written, the stadium, as written in the new request, the stadium could be used by collegiate and quote "non-collegiate" teams for practice and games, including, which I interpret to mean including, non-collegiate, intramural, amateur, collegiate, professional. Chicago has a professional softball team called the Chicago Bandits. Theoretically, they could play there, as that's worded now. Lights would be allowed twelve games per month until 9:00 PM for eight months per year from March through October. This translates to a possible ninety-six nights. Compare this to the Chicago Cubs. They have five night games a month for years. There's thirty-one night games this year, not ninety-six. With all due respect to the softball team, I'm a big fan of the softball team. This seems like an overly broad request that disregards the residents on the U2 district neighborhood. There is no transition in my area between the U2 district and the residents on the east side. The character and quiet enjoyment of our property by this residential neighborhood, in this neighborhood, is being steadily eroded by multiple Northwestern planned developments and zoning changes. Now, we have intrusive open-air lighting possible, be shining into our windows and interfering with enjoyment of our property for eight months a year. I respectfully ask you to deny this request. If they need lights for games for intramural games and for team practices at Northwestern for a few months as they said, then why are they incorporating all these extra things and lights into the proposal? Why are they asking for use by non-collegiate teams? And lastly, why are they asking for lights three times as many times as Wrigley Field? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski, who'll be followed by Chris Heald, and then Greta Wilstrm.
Hi. I hope you really heard what Ken was saying. I'm here speaking. I want to start out too. I actually like softball. I have four girls who all played softball. So, this is nothing about you guys. This is about Evanston having a zoning that they follow and a process which the residents can count on. I don't blame Northwestern for asking if they can use the stadium a whole lot more, but I go back to the fact that the softball, the softball stadium is not a minor adjustment to the Ryan Field. The Ryan Field ordinance had one building in it, and it had one mechanical building. To imply that a thirty-three-story or forty-seven-high at the highest building plus adding eighty-foot lights, which is like a used car lot, plus amplification is a minor adjustment is just totally off the wall, and I can't imagine anyone else in any other city would ever accept this. This is not a minor addition to a planned adjustment. By this right, Northwestern could build everything that they have twice and still only meet the FAR. So, I'm asking you not to let them build the stadium if they're not going to go with the other things that Ken brought up, if they're not going to bring in the lights. But the neighbors deserve to be able to see the study, see the lights, see how things are going to impact them. This can't just be, it should go through the Land Use Commission, is what I'm saying. And like I said, the MOU only specified the Ryan Field Stadium and the mechanical building in the ordinance. And so, I ask you, please, don't pass this out. The, I think that's basically, I mean, I could go on, but I don't need to. But I do look at the minor adjustments are modest changes, FAR reductions, setbacks, internal relocation, small terraces. Major adjustments are significant changes to the existing planned development. That's the stadium. This is a new building. So, please, stand by your residents, work with Northwestern to stay within, and we have to come up with a process by which the residents are not excluded from zoning just because staff review thinks it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Chris Heald, who'll be followed by Greta Wilstrm, and then Debbie Tiers.
Good evening, council members. My name is Christopher Heald, and I'm a proud Evanston resident, father and supporter of our community. And I'm here today to support the Northwestern softball team goal to have a new stadium built. I have an eleven-year-old daughter in the District 65 schools who loves sports, especially our softball. And to her, the Northwestern Wildcats are our hometown heroes. She idolizes them because they represent a future of equity and respect for what women bring to this country. I know her head coach, Kate Drohan, personally, not as a coach, but as a fellow parent whose child is in District 65 and is as a pillar of this community. Anyone who meets Kate sees how deeply she cares about Evanston, the town, our kids, and actually building a better future. This project actually reflects that same commitment. It isn't just about construction or capacity. I view it, and so do many, as equity. The current stadium is, I laugh out loud about how outdated it is. No locker rooms, no restrooms for these athletes. Conditions we would never accept for any other male team. Approving this stadium sends a powerful message to every young female athlete out there, especially people like my daughter. Your sports matter, your opportunities matter, and your dreams matter. Northwestern's plans also benefit our community as a whole outside of just immediate neighborhood. It upgrades the Evanston Township High School field, which builds a better future for all softball athletes in this community, not even ones that might just be Northwestern-bound. And by allowing other teams to be able to play on the Northwestern field, groups like my daughter's Evanston Baseball Softball Association would also be able to play on that new field. By completing this project alongside the Ryan Field reconstruction, the whole goal was to disrupt, to keep disruptions minimized instead of prolonging it, instead of having trucks keep going around and around after Ryan Field is done, to promote equity. So, I urge you to support this proposal, not just for this team, but for the kids of Evanston, the family in the future. Show them that we value fairness, opportunity, and inspiration.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Greta Wilstrm, who'll be followed by Debbie Tiers, and then Ally Ruiz.
Yes. Hi, council members. I'm excited to be here today in support of the softball stadium build. I am a resident of the Seventh Ward and actually live on Isabella about two blocks west of the stadium. So, I'm very familiar with the construction traffic that we have, and all of that comes with it. However, I'm also a former college softball player, and I've attended many Northwestern softball games. And to see the stadium that they're playing in is the same pretty much stadium that I was playing in twenty years ago is unfortunately pretty sad. And the opportunity for them to have a new stadium that allows the community to see the investment in women's sports and also allowing for our children, especially my children, I have two boys, and I couldn't be more proud that my six-year-old came home from a game and said he wanted to play softball in college, and I had to then explain to him that probably was not the best choice for him, that he should probably play baseball, but he continued to tell me he's playing softball. And so, to have other people, especially young boys and young children, be able to have that same experience, that's what we should be talking about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Debbie Tiers, who'll be followed by Ally Ruiz, and then Kansas Robinson. Robinson.
Hello. I'm Debbie Tiersch. I live on Isabella Street in Willmet. I'm concerned about Northwestern's request to use Isabella Street for westbound construction truck traffic. After Willmet refused to let them do this, Willmet rejected their request in order to protect that part of Willmet from additional noise and pollution. That will double if trucks are allowed to drive westbound. They'll have both eastbound and westbound truck traffic. Northwestern is asking for Evanston to permit what Willmet rejected. By permitting trucks to drive on the wrong side of the street, although technically in Evanston, they would still be going in the same direction on the same narrow street, negatively impacting the same houses who just rejected their request. Please note that this does not only affect the houses facing the street. Noise and pollution from large construction trucks travel and affect homes for several blocks. Northwestern has alternatives that do not use Isabella. Northwestern states they cannot use Ridge or Sheridan because Evanston has declared they are not truck routes. Well, Isabella is also not a truck route. The Cook County Route System map shows both Sheridan and Ridge as major roads. It does not show the section of Isabella that Northwestern wants to use as a major road. Sheridan and Ridge are seen by the county as handling heavy traffic, but not Isabella. Ridge and Sheridan are more suitable for heavy trucks than Isabella. If Northwestern plans to have only five or six trucks today, as they state, those trucks could use Ridge or Sheridan. Construction trucks should not be allowed to drive on the wrong side of the street on Isabella Street in order to skirt the Evanston-Willmet intergovernmental agreement. To allow this would be a truly unneighborly act against a neighboring town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ally Ruiz, who will be followed by Kansas Robinson, and then Kristin Kernan.
My name is Ala Russ. I live in Dupie, Ala. I live on Dupie Street on the corner of Isabella and Dupie, right across the humongous construction. If you, if one of you would just spend some time at Isabella, you would see what kind of effort it takes me to get out of my garage onto Isabella. You would understand why I so vehemently oppose construction trucks on Isabella. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kansas Robinson, who will be followed by Kristin Kernan, and then Armin Takat.
My name is Kansas Robinson, and I'm a senior on the Northwestern softball team. Being a part of this program has shaped who I am, as an athlete, a teammate, and a student. It's taught me discipline, leadership, and how to balance the demands of a college-level sport with a full academic load. One moment that really sticks with me happened last season against Notre Dame. We were down bases loaded, and I hit a grand slam to tie the game. It was one of the best moments of my softball career, but not long after, we had to call the game due to darkness because we didn't have lights on our field. We couldn't finish what we started, and we ended up in a tie. On top of the athletic challenges, we also, we're also full-time students. Many of us are taking rigorous courses, working towards degrees that will shape our futures beyond softball. Without lights, practices have to be held in narrow windows during the day, often conflicting with classes or cutting practices short. We're constantly juggling, and having a field with lights would allow the flexibility to succeed both on the field and in the classroom. This is my final year, and it would mean so much to finish strong, having the program, knowing that the program is moving forward, but more importantly, this isn't just about me. It's about the future of Northwestern softball. It's about giving younger athletes the facilities and opportunities they deserve and making sure the little girls who dream of wearing purple and white one day have a program they can be proud of. So, thank you so much for your time and for supporting Northwestern softball. Go Cats.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kristin Kernan, who will be followed by Kate Drohan, and then Lauren Schwendeman.
Hello. I'm Kristin. I am a resident of the Third Ward. I was not prepared to actually do this, so please bear with me. I've not done this before, but I am here to address the long-term vacation rentals, the rates that these are bringing up, the pricing that is going up that also affects long-term housing rentals of Evanston residents. I've been a lucky Evanston resident now for just over seven years, moving up here from Georgia, so the price tag was a little shocking, but do not want to be priced out by these long-term rentals, as they call them, and what they also do to our hospitality industry, of which I'm a part. Why not utilize our local hotels, have that tax revenue? I noticed a $7 million deficit in our budget. Why not utilize what we have here, have these folks staying in our hotels, also to then also going to our local restaurants, not Popeyes? But anyway, so, but utilizing our local restaurants, getting the tax revenues from there as well, but by staying in our hotels, and then also to having an opportunity to keep the pricing in Evanston at a rate that the normal average Jane, myself, can afford. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kate Drohan, who will be followed by Lauren Schwendeman.
Thank you for your time again. As I stated a couple weeks ago, I've been a Seventh Ward resident since 2018 and the head softball coach at Northwestern for the last 25 years. I want to start just by saying thank you to the City of Evanston staff for spending some time with us last week and working to get to a resolution that we believe will serve the needs of our program, along with allowing us to continuing to be a good and thoughtful neighbor to our neighbors around our field. I think this is something that's been really important to us over the last two and a half decades, and it's important for us to continue to do that. And as Kansas described, I think our practices will come out of necessity at night. We'll be very thoughtful about that. And I want to remind everyone, our season is in March and April and May, and oftentimes those evening practices are not ideal because of weather, anyway. I also want to stress how intentional we've been trying to be good neighbors relative to construction. As a neighbor of Central Street myself, I think we can all agree that no one wants to extend this construction timeline, right? So, we have an opportunity here. By agreeing to this tonight, we have the opportunity to start and finish our project before the Ryan Field project is finished. And we think that, I believe as a neighbor and also a member of this program, that that's really the most ideal situation that we can find here. My final comment, and this one is near and dear to my heart, and that's of gender equity. As I've stated before, we have the worst field in our conference, and still, these women chose Northwestern. And they chose Northwestern because they believed in the academic opportunities, they believed in the opportunities that Northwestern had to provide, but they also believe in the city of Evanston, and they chose, they chose to spend their really impactful college years here. They chose Northwestern, and we've won three out of the last four Big Ten championships with the worst field in the league. So, you understand the kind of women here in the room. Thank you. And, you know, as we think about our neighbors, and we've been able to, and just since I saw you last, we have 200 signatures of residents who support this project and the timeline of this project. You know, and we have an opportunity. Northwestern has stepped forward to address this gender equity issue and to right this wrong, and the City of Evanston can really make that come to fruition here by approving this. And I think that's, it's an important component to Northwestern and to our city. So, thank you for your time, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lauren Schwendeman.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'll start by saying I love living in Evanston. I am a Seventh Ward resident. Part of why, one of the major reasons I love living in Evanston is because we get the benefits of living next to a world-class institution that brings a lot of culture, events, world-class athletics. One of the best softball teams in the country is right here in Evanston. And as a parent to an eight-year-old girl who's here and who's been very patient, I will say that the Northwestern softball team really enhances my experience of community in Evanston, and my daughter and I go to games every spring. We go to fall games. She goes to Northwestern softball camps. Again, it's one of the reasons that Evanston is a great city to live in is because of this connection to Northwestern. I will also say I live on Sherman, close to Sherman and Central, which means I have trucks coming down my street most, every time I leave my house, it's a truck route. It's dusty, it's loud. I don't love the trucks, but I know it's the price I pay to live in a world-class city to have the infrastructure at Northwestern continue to be world-class. I believe these athletes deserve a world-class facility. If you've ever been to the NCAA tournament that we've, the team has often hosted, our field is, it's laughable compared to other facilities in the country, and so I'd love to see investment in the stadium. I'm really excited that Northwestern is choosing to invest in women athletics. Again, it is an equity issue, and I'm going to directly benefit from that investment, and I ask that you please allow this project to complete alongside the timeline of Ryan Field. I don't love the trucks, but I would rather have a few more trucks today than bring the timeline out any further. I think the women deserve to have their field built, again, as a matter of equity. So, final, in closing, I'll just say, like, please allow the project to move forward now and don't lengthen the truck route usage any further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the end of the list of those who signed up in person to speak in person. A number of people signed up online to speak in person, so we moved now to them, beginning with Rodney Green, followed by Andrea Smeaton, and then Barbara Wallace. I do not see Mr. Green here. He signed up a few weeks ago. All right. We now move ahead in that case with Andrea Smeaton, who will be followed by Barbara Wallace, and then Robert Keating.
I just have to say really quickly, I love watching you play, and I think your coach is amazing. I just wanted to quickly remind, I'm a Willmet resident. Is this, oh. I'm a Willmet resident, and I just wanted to ask, to firmly ask, that you not allow trucks to go on the wrong side of a small street. It is dangerous, and I know, I want you guys to have a stadium too. I really do. But I live right at the end of that block and of Ashland where it goes into Fifth Street, and we must have, I don't know the count now, but all of our new residents have little children. My husband was T-boned last month at the corner of Isabella and Fifth Street, and it is a constant, dangerous area. I don't know what we're going to do about it. However, there has to be an alternative. I mean, someone said that Ridge and Sheridan are major streets. Isabella's a small street, and to allow trucks to drive the wrong way on an already busy and potentially harmful area, I ask, please, to, to think of a different way. Please. It's dangerous and unnecessary, and I thank you very much for your time and your commitment to both of our intergovernmental agreement and to your city, which is wonderful too. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Barbara Wallace, who will be followed by Robert Keating, and then Ricardo Villalobos.
Hi, council. I have nothing to say about softball, by the way. I just wanted to say that credible and timely information about ICE activity is important to me, and I think it's important to a lot of other Evanston residents. I don't know what the city has in place, but I'm asking the city to put in place some sort of accurate notification system so that residents can know where and when ICE is in Evanston in as timely a manner as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Robert Keating, who will be followed by Ricardo Villalobos, and then Greg Hummel.
Hello. On behalf of Evanston Transit Alliance, we strongly support revising the bike plan and want this plan to be fitting of our climate and equity goals. The centerpiece has to be bikeways for all ages and abilities, meaning a facility that feels comfortable and provides safety for all current and potential users, inclusive of age, ability, type of bike or mobility device, socioeconomic status, race, gender, or any other identity and experience a person may hold. Many existing bike facilities in Evanston accommodate only the boldest people biking and exclude or insufficient for others, such as low-income individuals who make up half of all census-reported commuter bicyclists and are four times more likely to be injured or killed from traffic violence, children, families, or other adults which travel at different riding paces or use differently sized vehicles like adaptive or cargo bikes, those who are interested in biking but concerned about the dangers of car traffic, which surveys shows the number-one concern holding people back. We must be designing a comprehensive vision for our network with these and other users in mind. We cannot keep missing opportunities, like with recent projects on Main or Green Bay, to add dedicated facilities for cyclists of all ages and abilities, and it's why we need a comprehensive bike plan in place to ensure we're not just rebuilding the past but planning for the future. Cities across North America are increasingly viewing streets not solely as corridors that move motor vehicles, but as vibrant places that safely connect communities to opportunity and to each other. Street design that prioritizes biking is safer for everyone, not just people using bikes, but those walking, riding, and motor vehicles, and using other mobility devices. We ask that council and the community be thoroughly involved and invested in this plan as it is crafted, for it to be bold with a focus on protected bikeways for all ages and abilities, and to not just adopt it, but set a goal for its realization, such as all residents living within a five-minute walk of a protected facility by 2030, and to put real resources behind its implementation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ricardo Villalobos, who will be followed by Greg Hummel.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ricardo Villalobos. I am honored to serve as the new executive director of Evanston Latinos. Our organization was founded to strengthen our community, build bridges, and ensure that Evanston's Latino residents represented and supported and heard. I want to acknowledge the growing fear in our community around the threat of immigration, deportations, federal agents in our communities. For far too many families, the possibility of losing their livelihood and their connection to this beautiful city is an everyday reality. Yet, we also know that in moments of uncertainty, Evanston has shown its strength by becoming, coming together, sharing information, and looking out for our neighbors. Evanston Latinos is committed to standing for our residents, and we invite the city, our partners, and community members to work together with us. Together, we can remain vigilant, protect our families, our residents, and ensure that every resident, every child, every family feels safe and included in the fabric of our beautiful city. These folks come here, they chose this beautiful city to live in, to grow, and to raise their babies. It's our responsibility to make sure they're safe, and we ask for your help in that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Greg Hummel. In that case, I believe that concludes the in-person portion. Did I miss somebody here who was hoping, who signed up to speak tonight? In that case, we move on to the online portion of the public comment, beginning with Vicky Posenko, who will be followed by Galen Burghardt. Posenko, who will be followed by Galen Burghart.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Posenko, and I'm the Executive Director of the Evanston Animal Shelter. I would like to encourage you to vote for the change in the city's stray hole ordinance that you're looking at tonight. This change serves several purposes. It makes our policy consistent with Cook County. The data shows that almost all strays that are eventually reclaimed are claimed within the first four days of arrival at the shelter. Typically, somebody leaves a gate or a door open, and the dog or the cat escapes, and it's immediately returned to its home. Reducing the stray hole for animals that are not reclaimed allows us to commence with non-emergency medical care and spay-neuter surgery sooner and can reduce the overall length of stay at the shelter. Finally, feral cats are unowned and unsocialized, and they are essentially wild animals. Holding them for four days in a cage prior to their spay-neuter surgery is inhumane, and it's dangerous for volunteers and staff. We want to be able to provide vaccinations and spay-neuter surgeries for these cats and do it safely and humanely. Thank you for considering these changes. I'll be on the Zoom call for the duration of the meeting if you have any questions when that comes up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Galen Burghart.
Hello, yeah. I'm speaking in support of the amended bike plan and, yeah, the Evanston Transit Alliance. I have experienced the dangers that come with the lack of these facilities. I've been hit probably seven times, I think, by cars. One time, my sister also was hit by a car on her bike and spent a week in the hospital. And if she hadn't worn her helmet, she would not have survived. So also, yeah, if you're a bicyclist, please wear a helmet. But yeah, I think that adding paths, protected bike lanes in particular, would make a huge difference. My kids are now young, they're starting to ride, and they think the idea of riding in the street is crazy, and I think they're not entirely wrong for feeling that way. Yeah, and yeah, softball is cool. And thank you, Vicky, for believing that Evanston Animal Shelter does. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening. We now move to special orders of business. Is there a motion relative to item SP1?
Mr. Mayor, I will move item SP1, introduction of ordinance 39-025, adopting a 1% grocery tax effective January 1st of 2026.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves introduction of ordinance 39-025. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sufferton.
Clayton, I hope you're coming in here to talk about this, right? That's why you're in the room? Otherwise, I'd put you on the spot.
We gave slides at the last presentation, and we've updated those from the last meeting.
Just real quick, in order to raise $2.5 million, what is the increase to the property tax that would be required?
$2.5 million increase to the property tax levy?
Right.
Let me open the slides.
Make it a little like more granular. Can you give it like per $100,000 of tax value?
Sure, sure. Let me open our slides quick. So if we were to go with a property tax increase, it comes out to about $78 per year for a $400,000 home.
Okay. And with the percentage of taxes paid by, out of Evanston residents, what is your guess on what Evanston residents pay in the grocery tax if we were to just continue the existing tax?
If the average Evanston household spent all of their money at an Evanston grocery store throughout the course of a year, it comes out to about $66 per year per household.
Okay. And if they buy groceries in Niles, Glenview, Skokie, Chicago, they're paying this tax?
They would be subject to whatever the taxes are after January 1st for those communities.
Right. But they would be, if they are homeowners or if they're renters, they're on the hook for the property tax increase if that's the route we go.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as we discussed this in quite some detail at our last meeting, so I'll just briefly recap the reasons that I am supporting continuing a 1% grocery tax. In no particular order, this is not a new tax, it's something that we are all comfortable with, we have been paying this, loathe these many years. More than 50% of that burden is paid by non-Evanston residents. Our most vulnerable residents are protected and do not currently have to pay tax, SNAP recipients don't have to pay tax. And last and not least, and this is not, you know, always the best reason for doing stuff, but everyone else is doing this. And I'm not saying if Skokie and Willmet jumped off a cliff, we should jump off a cliff too. But we would be the only community in our neck of the woods that would not be continuing the 1% local grocery tax with, in full disclosure, the, Chicago not having formally declared their intent to continue this, but that seems to be the way the wind is blowing. So I don't see any reason for Evanston to be an outlier here. I will be supporting the 1% tax.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Haraigaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 39-025 is introduced. Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you have previously stated your intent to veto this legislation should it pass, I am going to move to add a special order of business to our scheduled meeting on September 15th, so that we can take a final vote on the grocery tax ordinance at that time. And should you choose to veto that ordinance, we then have time at our scheduled September 29th meeting to overrule that, that veto, assuming the six council members who support it this evening will continue their support. So I am making that motion, which I have just emailed to the council in writing.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves to create a special order of business on the January 5th, nope, so bad at months. September 15th, special city council meeting for action on ordinance 39-025. Councilmember Harris, I believe, seconded. Would the clerk please, oh, councilmember Burns, followed by Rogers.
I think Councilmember Newsma, you know, summed up why I think we should do this for now. I think we can make changes if needed. I am not prepared to increase our property tax on the fly, in a sense, that if, for those who have been following this council, it's been really important, not only to, I think a majority of this group, certainly a majority of the last group, the last council, that we kind of hold the line on property taxes. And for me personally, I wanted to make sure that, that we continue to do things like looking for new sources of revenue, which we, I think we found, or we added maybe $2.000 million dollars to our, our budget last year in doing that, going through that exercise. Zero-based budgeting, which we're doing, that was a referral I made, was incredibly important to me. People talk about, you know, whether it's waste, or the cities don't operate more efficiently. And so as I was doing my own research, trying to think about what is the most like productive way to figure that out, zero-based budgeting is what I came up with. I made a referral. I appreciate a majority of council supporting that, and that is underway right now. And so I would like to, for that to, for that process to finalize, for us to go through another exercise of figuring out if there are any new sources of revenue that would not increase the cost of housing in Evanston, which is already incredibly high, in my opinion. And, and so I'm not prepared to, to kind of offset the loss of revenue from the, from the grocery tax on property tax right now. I'd also asked my, my ward, not in a survey, but through a few ward meetings, and surprisingly, they supported grocery tax. There was just like, we're already paying it, let's just continue it, other places are doing it. As Councilmember Newsma said, our most vulnerable residents are already exempt from it. Could that change? Maybe, but we should be making decisions based on what's happening right now, knowing that we can always make changes if we need to. So just wanted to add my feedback. Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers.
A question for Council Rugby. Our meeting on the 15th is a public hearing, special meeting. How would this fit in? Would it have to be done separately from our public hearing, or would it be rolled into that meeting?
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. For the record, Alex Rugby Corporation Council. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. I believe that that could be a special order of business item on the agenda, so each item will be brought to the table separately, but the hearing could still continue, it could just be handled either before or after.
All right, thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Haraigaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries, and the September 15th special meeting will include on this agenda a special order of business, which is action on ordinance 39-025. This brings us to the consent agenda. One item is already removed. P4 did not make it out of the Planning and Development Committee. This need not be removed, but just for your awareness, I want to share with folks who are not on PND that P5 was amended in committee so that the moratorium applies to all vacation rentals, not only non-owner occupied ones. Are there other things that folks would like to remove from the consent agenda?
P6. P2 and P3.
P2 and P3?
And A10.
You said A10?
A10.
Great. A10.
If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I move, I will move the consent agenda minus items P2, P3, P4, P6, P7, A4, and A10.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves the entirety of the consent agenda with the following seven exceptions: P2, P3, P4, P6, P7, A4, and A10. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraigaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the seven items just enumerated is adopted. Given, just eyeballing the audience, I think out of respect for the bulk of the people who I believe are still here, I think it makes sense to begin with item P7. And I'm guessing Councilmember Haraigaris will not want to make this motion, so does somebody else want to make a motion on item, relative to item P7?
Mr. Mayor, I will move item P7, which is ordinance 47-025, approving a minor adjustment to the planned development at 1501 Central Street. This is the softball stadium.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves adoption of ordinance 47-025. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Davis, followed by Kelly.
So I have a lot of things to say. The first is that, I do, it's in my ward, so of course I have a lot to say about it. The first thing is that I originally held this for two weeks because I wanted to give the city of Willmet time to reach out to us and to collaborate with Northwestern in some capacity. They didn't really reach out to me after I did reach out, mention that I was interested in collaborating any type of way. And so I have to assume that there is nothing that they expect from us in regards to this process. I hear that they've talked to other individuals perhaps, but I cannot, you know, guess what happened in those conversations. The next thing I wanted to mention is that I have a very detailed ward newsletter that I send out every month. I write it myself, and I make sure that I prioritize, and I make it very reader-friendly. I put the most important things at the top, the things that I think people will argue with me about at the top. I'm very willing to listen to people say whatever they have to say, and I featured this in my newsletter as soon as the permit was filed back in May. I had a ward meeting about this matter in June. I included in my newsletter, including a Q&amp;A from the ward meeting every month since then, including this month as well, it's in the September newsletter as well. I got a couple of complaints, I went to Northwestern about it, they addressed the complaints. One of the things that I have to emphasize to all of my residents is that there were no protections to begin with. Like, we had no memorandum of understanding, there were no rules for this field. So they were allowed to do whatever they wanted with the field previously. There were no restrictions on noise, there was no restrictions on lights, there were no, all they had were the current restrictions that are kind of in place about having to end their games at 9:00 PM. So what that means is that anything that you see in the memorandum of understanding is not an increase in, in rights for Northwestern. Every provision we have in there is a restriction that previously did not exist. And so when we talk about concerns of them doing more, they actually had more capacity to do more a couple of months ago. What I also have to remind people is that unlike other aspects of the Ryan Field, this particular field is, has no houses touching, like sharing too much of a border for this field. So while the light will, could possibly be an issue, but I'm going to get to that next, there is no one who's going to like look out their window, and the thing they first see is going to be that field, particularly because if you have been following the conversations with Ryan Field, we intend to put shrubbery up against that stadium in that whole area in the next year or so. The next thing I also have to say is that they cannot have any games or practices after 9:00 PM. It got dark a little bit later today, but if you look for August 1st, oh, well, actually I have here that the sun set today at 7:17 PM. On August 1st, it's set at 8:17 PM. So if they turned the lights on as soon as it got dark, they would have the lights on for 43 minutes in August. When I looked it up for March or April, ends up being about the same time, 7:11 PM. When we compare this to the Wrigley Field and the Cubs games, they start their games at 6:30. So they would not be able to finish their games in the amount of time that the softball, to push up against our 9:00 PM because it's not the same situation. We have received no complaints about this field in the past few years. And what I'll also mention is that when I took office, the reason why I originally came and made sure we had a memorandum of understanding is because the previous alder person told me that there were significant concerns about the baseball field. Now, they get a lot of complaints, actually. They've been a little unruly on occasion, but we've actually received none, again, about the softball field. So I feel comfortable with this because as I've told people, I'm very much so about being proactive, and I have engaged the community previously, and I also think that the current provisions are very reasonable. I've also heard complaints about the aspect of non-collegiate. I've put in my newsletter, I mentioned that they are not allowed to have professional sports played at that stadium in that district. And the reason that they took out and added in non-collegiate was to allow for clinics for high school kids and for also for the ETHS students. Now, we could try to provision for every type of extracurricular for K through 12, or try to mandate the ages and be very detailed, but honestly, it feels like it's getting pedantic for a area that we have previously not had much of an issue with, and given the fact that we're putting in good things in place. I'll also end this by saying that we have plans to rewrite huge swaps of our zoning code in three or four months. So if we do find an issue with this area, we still have the ability to legislate and to control this area. There is nothing saying that we cannot do something later. And I have put in my newsletter, and I will be having ward meetings, for us to discuss a comprehensive, a, what they call a campus plan, specific to Northwestern, so that we could decide how we're going to have, how we will progress with our relationship with Northwestern with regards to zoning, and with regards to how we set our expectations as a community. And also, if we want to revisit the process of how, like, if we require a land use commission to be used every single time there's any permit filed, I think that's a discussion we can have in the next couple of months.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Newsma.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, all of you. Thank you. And I think it's very exciting about your, the softball stadium. I do support it, to be clear. I don't support the process. I want to be very clear about that. But I do support the softball stadium, and I think it's going to be very exciting. But I am very concerned about, you know, the entire ordinance for Ryan Stadium speaks to one building. It speaks to Ryan Stadium. So throughout it, it doesn't speak to any, it doesn't contemplate any other structure except one single structure. So to suggest that this is an adjustment on this structure, there's absolutely no way I can accept saying that this is just a minor, minor adjustment on that structure. I'm going to support the stadium this evening, but I do want to, after this, you know, work with staff to really, the thought, do we know how many square feet, the total? It's a three-foot building, an L-shaped building, either Ms. Flax, or can you, I didn't see that in here. I saw 25,000 feet for the, in the plans, but I don't know if that was in reference to the FAR, to the, or if that was the entire building. Do you know what the square footage is?
Sarah Flax, Community Development Director. I don't have those, the square footage, but it's, this is a modification of an existing planned development, so.
Right. No, I just wanted the square footage, though.
Mm-hmm.
So this is a three-story building that wasn't there before, that we're approving without knowing the square footage. For me, I'm really all about strengthening the relationship with Northwestern, and I believe we really can strengthen those ties when we have proper hearings. I think if we, this went before the land use commission, it could be better interrogated and even perhaps improved a little bit. I don't think we're the body to be looking at a three-story, brand-new building of, I don't know how many thousands of square feet, and say it's, you know, basically like a tweak on an existing structure that has a whole ordinance, again, that only contemplates one structure. So I'm uncomfortable about that. I think this would be better for the neighbors. I think it would go more seamlessly. I think folks would accept it better if this went through, through as either a major, I don't even think it's adjustment. I think it's, you know, either an amendment, a full-on amendment, as it should be through the land use commission. So I'm going to support it. I think it's wonderful. I think it's going to go through anyway. But I do think that it's, and it's not on Northwestern. I mean, this is the city. The city needs to ensure that we go through a process, and I will say hat tip to folk, to space at, you know, the Evanston Folk Festival for really keeping the residents tied in every step of the way, post, and changing things. There's no way that I can accept something like this, again, as a minor adjustment on a building, that on a plan, on a planned development, a special use, that didn't in any way contemplate any other building outside of this building, but I will support it uncomfortably because of the process, but not, I'm not uncomfortable about the softball stadium itself. So let me just see if that's all I have to say about this. But I do look forward to further discussions about this, so that residents can have a proper hearing before the land use commission, to have really focused attention, and look at maybe ways that it can be improved. And again, I think the process alone does help the overall community move, helps the project to move in concert with the community. So again, that's on the city, not on you all. So thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am looking forward to voting in support of the stadium. However, I do want to talk about the traffic logistics and the concern that one of the Wilmette residents raised about traffic, about trucks going back westbound on the wrong side of the street of Isabella. Strikes me as kind of silly and goofy, but I understand there is a reasonable workaround that staff has come up with.
Thank you, Councilmember. We've done some additional research, and we believe that we can, due to operational and safety concerns, and also because of a conflict with the jurisdiction, we can provide a waiver of restrictions of trucks on Ridge. So the route out of the construction site would go eastbound on Isabella to Ridge, down to Central, and then rejoin the truck route for Ryan Field.
Makes sense to me. I'm glad that was able to be worked out, and I'm looking forward to your support of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
That's me. So I played softball in high school, '23, Ryan Sandberg. Right. He made '23 famous more than Jordan did, but I take both. Very excited about the opportunity. It's so important for women to be able to be respected in our sports, and doing this is just one step towards that. I wanted to commend our fellow councilmember for just laying out the things that she put into place and asked, and it took extra work for her to do that, to make sure that when people weren't speaking up, and we find that in Evanston, that if it doesn't bother you, people just kind of sit in the cut, and it's the people who are upset about things that speak the most. So I appreciate you doing that, Councilmember Davis, making sure that the opportunities were there, whether people took them. And I just want to correct you, season ticket Cubs holder, 6:05 is when the night game starts.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with a minute forty left.
I just had a question regarding, in the MOU, in the ordinance, it states that there's a community advisory council that meets twice a year throughout construction and, and, you know, throughout, for years. So I'm just wondering if that's been meeting? Can someone, Ms. Flax, can you answer that? It says, I know when, it was supposed to be made up with three community members selected by staff and three, three members selected by Northwestern. I don't know who those three community members are.
That committee is connected with the Ryan Field. It is not connected with the softball field.
Correct. But we're connecting the softball field to Ryan Field now as an adjustment. So I'm just wondering, has, well, either way, has the community advisory council been meeting, or, or will it start to meet? It's in the ordinance.
For Ryan Field, no, it has not been meeting. It won't be meeting until.
I can share an update. We've had some conversations with Councilmember Davis about meeting in, sometime in October to identify the people who will be serving on that advisory committee and getting that committee launched. And we'll be adding that to the city website as well.
Great. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 47-0-25 is adopted. Returning to the regular order, Councilmember Sufferton, do you have a motion on item A4?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I move item A4, which is award of a contract with LZ Design Build Group for the Gray Park Dog Park.
Councilmember Sufferton moves award of this contract. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. I pulled this off, again, just staying focused on our, our ordinance, our responsible bidders ordinance that passed in May. I just, this is a single, there's only a single response. So I guess I'm just, I wonder if there's somebody here who can tell me how, how bidders respond to the responsible bidders ordinance requirements? Is there anybody here who can answer that? Is it just one? Like, do you meet all these? Is there anybody? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. So we've added a few affidavits to the bid proposals. So the contractors will have to submit affidavits, so they can comply with different aspects of the RBO. And then on top of the affidavits that they're asked to supply, they're required to produce certain certifications and paperwork to back up the affidavits. So we're asking them to certify that they do meet RBO, and then also provide the paperwork that shows proof of it.
Okay, so the LZ, who we selected for Gray's Park, so they have done that, or they, they say they will do that? Just, just in terms of process?
That, that I don't know, but according to the process that we are requesting them to do, they have to certify that they comply and provide the paperwork for the bid to move forward.
Okay. So that's forthcoming, most.
I believe they submitted it with their bid, but I have not personally reviewed it, but that was the instruction to purchasing.
Okay, and that would include their subcontractors?
Correct.
That meet that. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles? Sorry. Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the contract is awarded. Now on item A10, Councilmember Sufferton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move item A10, which is approval of amendment number one to the contract with Elevate for residential retrofits through the Evanston Green Homes Pilot.
Second.
Councilmember Sufferton moves approval of this amendment. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. So I just wanted to see if we have some resolution. This is connected to our one-stop-shop, our greenhouse program that we initiated with ARPA money. And did we ever, I just thought I'd ask, did we ever get resolution to the, the Department of Energy allocated, awarded $300, well, $400,000, $330,000? Did we, I'm hoping that by now we were able to secure that allocation to our program, which was going to the EDC, Evanston Development Corporation. I know they kind of dissolved, but was that, did anybody ever finally provide that, that funding that the Department of Energy allocated for, for our program?
Good evening, Cara Pratt, Chief Sustainability and Resilience Officer for the city. Unfortunately, we do not have resolution on that federal prize that was to the Evanston Development Cooperative. They've ceased communications with anyone associated with Evanston Green Homes Pilot.
Thank you. That's disappointing. And I know there's some, and this isn't to, but has there been an effort, I know, like Jonathan, and this isn't, but I know you were a founding member of that, have you reached out to some, I'm just wondering what efforts have been made by folks? Or Daniel, you wrote a letter to help them get that money. Have you done some outreach to folks, to just say, to really try to, I mean, that's a lot of money.
Yeah. I have, I could look up the date. Quite some time ago resigned my membership in that organization. My understanding, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the organization, is that essentially the business, it was a business that failed. They went out of business. I'm not sure who's managing the accounts, if anyone.
Okay. I mean, this $330,000 would go a long way in supporting green homes for low-income families. And I know, Daniel, you also wrote a letter to help EDC secure this money, and I think it was Lenz, Latinos of Evanston North Shore. They also were part of this. Did, Daniel, did you talk to anybody to see, I mean, it just seems, $330,000, it's earmarked for, was earmarked for this. I understand, I'm just wondering what efforts have been made by those of you who are somewhat connected to them?
I've had lengthy conversations with both of the people who were involved in EDC, who I had relationships with, Dick Coe and Robbie Marcus, both of whom are entirely disconnected from the organization and out of town. Dick and his family moved, I believe, to New Jersey. Robbie went to, I think, Central America for at least a year, and then maybe to Britain after that. I solicited each of their assistance and helping me connect with anybody who might actually still be involved with the organization at this time. They were unsuccessful, and I was unsuccessful. I think the basic reality here is the organization went under. And I suspect there are no resources left, and the whole thing is very disappointing. Now, to be clear, these were not city resources. They were neither offered by us, nor offered to us. And so our, it would be expected that we would have no control over them, but nonetheless, it's very disappointing, for sure.
Sure. But I just want to respond that it was, they received an A in their application to the Department of Energy, based on the Evanston program that this was to fund, and based on a support from you. And I, you know, just to say it went under, but yet no one will answer our questions. I, anyway, I find it very disappointing, and I feel like that we should do a little bit more, given that this is dedicated for low-income families. But, okay, thank you. That's the only question I had. I support this. Thank you for your hard work, Cara.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the amendment is approved. We now are in the exciting territory of not having a chair of the relevant committee for the next three motions. So would anyone care to make a motion relative to item P2?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I would move item P2, a vacation rental license for 2005 Emerson Street.
Second.
Councilmember Rogers moves approval of the vacation rental license for 2005 Emerson Street. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and the license is approved. Now on item P3, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move item P3, a vacation rental license for 606 South Boulevard, Unit D.
Second.
Councilmember Rogers moves approval of the vacation rental license for 606 South Boulevard, Unit D. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Davis?
Which one is this? That was quick.
South Boulevard.
Okay.
Aye. With six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and the rental license is approved. And now on item P6, would someone care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move item P5.
P6.
P6.
So five was not pulled from the consent agenda. It was amended in committee, but not pulled.
Sorry. I circled the wrong one. P6, ordinance 54-0-25, granting a special use permit for 1702 Sherman Avenue for a religious institution and banquet hall in the D2 Downtown Retail Core District.
Second.
Councilmember Rogers moves introduction of ordinance 54-0-25. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity. I just, in PD, I didn't hear the question asked. Is there tax implications for the city with this happening?
No, there are not.
So they still pay?
The property is still on the tax rolls.
Okay. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 54-0-25 is introduced. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Rogers?
On this Saturday, September 13th, from 10:00 to 12:00, I'll be holding office hours at West Town Bakery, 101 Chicago. On September 18th, I intend to hold a ward meeting, if I can find a place in the 8th Ward or immediately adjacent, which is very difficult to do. If not, it will be a Zoom meeting, and that will come out in an e-newsletter this week. And also, since I was looking at our schedule, this is our last meeting before Bike the Ridge occurs, September 28th. So just putting that out for everyone, come out, ride your bikes. Hopefully, I mentioned to the bike plan people earlier that it would be lovely to have them there to engage the public, because that's obviously a biking population. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
And new city committee meeting on Wednesday at 5:00 o'clock here in the council chambers. That's all.
Councilmember Harris?
Tomorrow, bike improvement plan for Church and Dodge, starting at 4:30 PM at ETHS.
Councilmember Isles?
I've got a ward meeting on Thursday at Lincoln School at 6:00 PM. It's specifically about traffic calming.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. Number one, Fourth Ward office hours will be Sunday this month, September 14th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Berry Pike Cafe on the corner of Davis and Oak. And since we were talking about bikes tonight, I also want to give a shout out to Fourth Ward residents, Mark Metz and, and his wife, Noreen Edwards, who are in the middle of a cross-country bike trip that is raising money for the YMCA, McGaw YMCA Men's Residence Project, which is still a few million dollars short of their goal. So thank you to Mark Metz and Noreen Edwards. Links to their blog and their fundraising page are in my Fourth Ward newsletter, which anyone interested can find on my webpage on the city website. anyone interested can find on my webpage on the city website. Thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Nope.
Councilmember Davis?
My ward meeting is on September 25th at 7:00 PM at the Evanston Arts Center, and we'll be talking about housing and zoning.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2C, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation. Is it just litigation?
Second.
Let me finish the magic words. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered an executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. Those exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2C, Section 11.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves that the city council convene to executive session to discuss items related to litigation. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 8:50 PM, the city council resolves itself into an executive session to begin immediately in the council library.